Roll call vote to open up the meeting, please.
Will Sankowitz.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here.
Jean Fox.
Here.
Jennifer Blum.
Here.
Bob Clark.
Here.
John Burke.
Here.
Steve Owen is absent this evening.
All right, thank you for that. Obviously, the addition of Mrs. Strauss, Mr. Derek Field, uh, Thaddeus Welsh. Renee is here as well. At this point, I'm gonna ask if anyone outside of Lakeville is recording the meeting tonight? No? Great. Okay, thank you.
There's two of us.
Awesome, can I just get the names of the folks that are recording?
Um, do I have to do that?
That'd be great, please.
Sure, Wendy Stauffer.
Thank you.
Joy Malomo.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you for that. At this point, can everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hi. Pledge of Allegiance to the five in the United States of America and to the public who are involved with justice, one nation under God, and the principle of liberty and justice is strong.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so agenda item number four is going to be the acceptance of minutes from 6:14:23. Also, executive session minutes that will have to be voted separately there, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
So.
So.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the meeting minutes of 6:14:23. Any further discussion? Great, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? So, should carry unanimously. Renee, thank you. I'll entertain the same motion for the executive session minutes of 6:14:23.
Motion to accept.
A motion to accept from Ms. Fox, so I have a second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Flying down the agenda, item number five here is under public participation. As always, folks, I know, thank you all for coming out, we certainly appreciate it. Public participation is always going to be in accordance with our policy here, and that is BEDH. Each speaker will be permitted to a maximum of three minutes speaking, during which time they can speak about topics within the scope and responsibility of the school committee. Seeing the crowd here tonight and knowing what the topic is going to be, it would probably fall under that policy subcommittee here, so that's, we are good there. If we could limit our comments to three minutes, and the next person that goes up, if you have something new to add to the conversation, that would be great, okay? So at this point, I'll entertain public participation.
Hi, good evening. Has I reviewed like the last few months and grappled with understanding why we've not been able to start on a policy where parents and school committees are working together to protect parental rights and consent? I believe it's due to more of a defensive reaction than it is a proactive approach. I've asked for my son's name to be changed by the state law and the DESI regulations and guidelines, and in a letter that you sent, so we had a school committee meeting where we met with Will, Jean, Sherry, and Mr. Strauss to go over the specific issues that we had been experiencing concerned with. At that, after that meeting, Mr. Strauss had given a copy of a letter to us that he mailed to Mike and Kelly. And that part of it said, "I'm writing to you about advice Kelly recently provided to our high school principal regarding a student identifying in a school to a different gender. The original discussion with the principal was pretty straightforward, and the legal decision rendered was based upon the December 2022 Ludlow case. In addition, you stated, 'Given our lack of an improved school committee policy and given the Ludlow decision, does anything change in regard to following the wishes of a student with respect to his preferred name?' Yeah. The parents keep referencing the abbreviated language on the DESI site that could be construed to mean that the parents can request the child's given name be used across the board, which is contrary to the language in the Ludlow decision. Last night, your legal counsel said that you would not be using the Ludlow decision to create a policy due to pending appeal. As you stated previously, you use the Ludlow case in making your decision. So my question is, did you ask without legal counsel, and was this a personal decision? If the lawyer last night stated that the Ludlow law will not be used in creating a policy, and then we use the FERPA and the DESI guidelines, does that mean that you will honor our request and change our son's name back? We've asked also in addition for a copy of our son's safety plan three times, we've not received an original safety plan that was created without our knowledge. Instead, we received after that small council meeting, a gender support plan that was given to him to sign shortly after that meeting that he had never seen before. Was this form approved by the school committee? This form was not used prior to your start in 2022 and 2023. And my initial email inquiring about any gender-affirming policies due to not being able to locate one in the parent's handbook or on the website led me to send you my initial email. It said, and your response to me was, "Good morning, all school committee minutes are posted on the website, and there's been no meeting this school year in 2022, 2023 that addressed or developed a response to gender-affirming students within the district. Therefore, there was no protocol developed or conversation regarding the contacting of parents. I included the chair, vice chair, as well as the policy subcommittee chair on this email. Thank you, in peace, Alan." As you stated, gender-affirming plan that you had my son sign and you sent me a copy was not approved by the school committee. If you were to check with the previous superintendent, I'm confident he would report that this form was not created or used in the school during his term. So again, did you take action outside the school committee and implement a form that was not approved to be used? My husband and I submitted a Freedom of Information request and we're reviewing the information that has already been given to us. Last night, my husband was reading over some of the public information that was given, and he woke me up distressed, ill, and unbelief. He shared that within the approved curriculum, disturbing pictures that was shown to our son and all students who had taken sociology. This was a very graphic and disturbing image of an intersex genital. When I viewed this image, I turned away because I was so shocked by what I was viewing. This means that if your child took this class, they too saw this image. This teacher also told the class that what is said in the class stays in the class. Why was this image allowed to be in a sociology class? Why is this teacher stating that what is said in the class stays in the class? Are our math and English, and even then, our health teachers making these statements? I encourage any parent whose child took part in this class to request and to view this curriculum, the images, the cartoons, the lesson plans, to know what your child did already talk about and saw in this class. I hope this information that I'm sharing tonight can offer parents information to make a decision and give consent for their child to participate in sociology or question what's gonna be taking place. My last comment is, as I sat back this weekend over these last few months and just thought about how much we've been focused on this and how it's affected me, and I could understand what I'm experiencing, but I feel, I wanna make it clear that this is a very traumatic experience, and the image I wanna give you is, if you were standing, being held back, and you were watching your child be harmed, and you were being told you couldn't do anything to stop it, what would you do? You're rendered powerless, and so by not giving us the opportunity to follow the guidelines, the FERPA law that we have, and the initial request being denied based on the Ludlow case, which your lawyer last night said would not be used because it's an appeal, you know, we are still asking that the school would change our son's name back.
Mrs. Cronin, just final thoughts, okay?
Yep, so our concern too is like there are other families. We're very thankful for the people, the person, the community that reached out to us to offer support, and that's how we found out that our child had changed his name, that there are other families in the school right now, that their child has changed their name, and they're not being informed, and they're missing this opportunity during the summer to come together as a family and process this. And my last thought is just, when my husband John and I started this, we just came here out of good faith trying to work through this, and we're just so thankful for the community and all of the things that you have done, support, email calls, just to support us in this pushing for parental rights and consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Cronin, thanks for hearing me. Our faith teaches us that people have to take responsibility for their actions. Standing up for what is right is paramount to our principles. Last night's subcommittee appeared scripted, intended to mislead, along with the topic of meeting, the meeting being misrepresented in the agenda. Let's be clear once again, the issue at hand is parental rights. This has been our request from the beginning. You can go back and watch the tapes. You can look at our email correspondence. The Supreme Court declared the Constitution, and specifically, the Due Process Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment protects the fundamental rights of parents to direct the care, upbringing, education, and to their children, of their children. You clearly are discriminating against parents by refusing the Fourteenth Amendment right over their children. I leave you with this. Parents, I suggest you all submit a Freedom of Information request to Mr. Strauss and copy the school committee for all learning materials from the high school sociology class. These materials were designed by school staff. These materials are deplorable and include child pornographic images along with weaponizing comments that are intended to emasculate. One comment included in the teaching materials defined mansplaining as correctile dysfunction. I don't see how that is educational. It's inflammatory speech and discriminating. The class materials will truly shock your conscience. What is being done about this lesson plan? Teaching how to bully? Doesn't that fall into your anti-discrimination policy we were told of last night? Mind you, again, this lesson plan is designed by your staff, and someone must have approved the lesson plan. The community should also know, how many other children are you sharing secrets with? You know there are more than ever before, from your own admission. You're gonna let ten weeks go by and not inform parents and deprive them of quality time without the school confusing them. Don't let them find out like we did through the community. You cannot keep secrets. Finally, I too want to thank the community for the tremendous support we've received. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
My name is Antonio Acosta, and I'm a Freetown resident. I wanna speak about belonging, so I've attended numerous DEI committee meetings. I've seen Mr. Strauss there numerous times, I've had discussions with him, and he always highlights, "Our purpose is to make sure everyone feels like they belong," and I couldn't agree more. I think it's a wonderful message, and I wanna believe that you are, and everyone here is, is here in good faith. Belonging is not just about the students. Belonging is about students, parents, teachers, and the community at large all coming together. It's crucial. An essential part of parents' guardians' belongings is parental rights. Parental rights are not pro-discrimination. Parental rights are not anti-transgender. It's a false dichotomy that it's one or the other. It's not a zero-sum game. Parental rights are about trusting our educators and our schools. Our schools should be promoting a culture of trust and transparency. Conversely, we want to avoid a culture of murkiness and deceit. Dr. Erica Anderson, and I encourage everyone to look her up, she's a transgender clinical psychologist. She was born a man and is a transgender female. She filed an amicus brief on this exact issue just last year. I have the number for anyone that wants to see it. It was filed in the Fourth Circuit Court. In her brief, she quote, "Transitioning at school is a major and potentially life-altering decision that requires parental involvement for many reasons. I don't want to be erased as a transgender person, and I don't want anyone's prerogatives or identity to be taken away from them." This was with the New York Times, and just in January. "But on this one, I'm aligned with people who are willing to advocate for parents." End quote. If a teacher is truly concerned about safety in the home, they're all mandatory reporters, so report something. There should be no secrets. If there are no safety concerns, then parents should be included in everything involving their children. Purposefully excluding parents is insidious. And I chose that word specifically. Insidious is defined as proceeding in a gradual, subtle way, but with harmful effects. Insidious. It will introduce a never-ending conflict between parents and teachers. Questions will be raised about, "What else are they hiding from me?" Right? None of this promotes a sense of belonging. My original statement about belonging, none of this promotes belonging. Actually, it creates an us-against-them mentality, and will ultimately rip us apart. A community divided cannot thrive, and we will self-destruct. Nothing is more exclusionary or discriminating than excluding parents and guardians from matters involving their children, especially when it involves life-altering matters. If you truly want us to promote a spirit of belonging, then respect parental rights and ensure we are involved in our children's lives.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Matt Allen, Freetown.
One of the things as we're discussing the policy and as you guys are going through the subcommittee process, one of the things that I think we should also think about and talk about and build into the policy, assuming it's not already built in de facto, is staff education on the policy. You know, based on the age levels, based on the responsibilities, does the staff know what their responsibility is gonna be when it comes to the policy? Will the policy be signed off by each staff member knowing? One of the things that the policy I think should include, in my opinion, should be that even if by some legal wrangling, we cannot outright say it, encouraging familial in participation in any sort of transitioning of any kind. If the law prevents the child from being able, from parents being able to be outright told, then the policy of the school should be that every staff member encourages it. There also has to be consistency in the policy. You can't have a safety plan done, which denotes that somehow there is some sort of danger someplace, and then have some kid all of a sudden who's known as one person in the school go home to the unsafe place as a different person. I think that, you know, if we're gonna talk about mental health and safety for children, tell me how it makes sense that we have a child living, what's healthy or safe about living a dual life? It doesn't make any sense. And so if there truly is a safety plan because there is some sort of implied or assumed danger, then that bar should be high, and it should be followed through. As far as I understand, there's a safety plan with the Cronin's son, and then he's, by the way, go home to the unsafe environment. How does that, that's cognitive dissonance in my head when I think about that. So you can be safe here, just not anywhere else. Doesn't make any sense. We even have a sticker in the library, "This is a safe zone." What does that mean? The library is a place for safety, but the rest of the world is dangerous? Home is not safe? What messages are we sending to our kids in this school? This weird us-versus-them thing with Mom and Dad, "Don't understand you, they don't appreciate you for who you are." Really? They made you. I mean, really? The other thing too with that is, I think there needs to be some sort of an investigation done. If what the Cronins have said about the teacher, who said that this, whatever happens here stays here, now, if that means, you know, I always like to look at things in the best light, if that means you, we're not gonna talk about with other teachers what you say here, or something like that, that's one thing. But if we're creating an alternative path for children to deal with other adults as opposed to their parents, like whatever stays here, it doesn't leave this room, and you can be safe with us, and that is a non-starter for me as a father. I teach my son, "There are no secrets from me, ever." You go to any sort of training, and they talk about that's groomer mentality for predators. I'm not saying that this person is one, I'm just saying, if that's happened, how often has it happened, and is that part of the policy? Where we do not say, "Things in this classroom stay in this classroom." It seems to me it's a good policy that every classroom in this district should be able to handle an adult parent visitor at any time, to see anything that's being taught. That doesn't seem irrational or unreasonable to me. So as we're thinking about the policy, I'd like to, you know, put those values out there as guidelines, so thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Hi, Heidi Haltola, Lakeville. So first, I just wanted to discuss, I'd spoken with one of you last two weeks ago, and one of the things that was brought up was about safety, and disclosing to the parents brings up a safety concern. So I just wanted to kinda address that on the level of, if a child gets in a fight at school, what would you do? You'd notify the parents. Is there a risk that the child will go home and then get in trouble for it, maybe abused for it? What if they have a bad report card? There's a number of things that children can go home and be at a safety risk, but that doesn't allow the school to determine that. So with that being said, I wanted to discuss what the attorney, I think it was Gonzo, had said at the meeting last night. She was correct about the fact that this is a, was a, Ludlow was a federal district court case, it doesn't have any precedence, it's not binding. The First Circuit will come out with a decision, and that would be binding. But I did wanna address something and just read from the case, because if the school uses a Ludlow case to support itself, there's a thing at the court sites here, and I'm just gonna read it. "Plaintiffs assert the Ludlow Public School adopted and implemented a policy that went beyond the DESI guidance and rigidly prohibited any communication with parents about a student's gender identity unless the student consented, and this policy shocked the conscience, at least when applied to students in the middle school. The court agrees that the policy, as described by plaintiffs, was based on a flawed interpretation of DESI guidance and ignored the plain language advising that parents be informed after the student is advised that such communications will occur." So the court is even saying that parents should be advised, that's what the DESI guidelines say. "School personnel should speak with a student first before discussing a student's gender nonconformity or transgender status with a student's parent or guardian. Students and parents would almost certainly be better served by a more thoughtful policy that facilitated a supportive and safe disclosure by the student, with support and education available for students and parents as needed and when accepted. Such a policy should also consider the many complicated emotional issues and scenarios." So bottom line, the court is saying that the DESI guidelines say that the parents should have been disclosed. If our school district is citing to Ludlow, that's what that says, so to just not disclose that to the parents was incorrect. And as somebody else had spoken earlier, it doesn't make sense to not include, to provide an actual safe environment for the students, you need to have everybody on board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just gotta pull up my notes. I'm Joy Malomo from Lakeville. So there's so many things to address. Like over the last 72 hours, I've heard from people say things like, "Oh, the boy with the ponytail was walking down the hallway," somebody's relative, "at school, and the teacher approaches the boy and asks him, 'Hey, do you have some gender issues that you would like to discuss with me?'" I think that's wrong. I think a lot of us think that's wrong. That's grooming material. It needs to stop. We've read numerous articles and research, trying to follow the science and all of this, because a lot of us are really confused why it's being pushed so bad. We've discovered that there is, the vast majority of these children who are being groomed are special needs, they are on the spectrum, they are on the autism line, ADHD, ADD, anxiety, depression, the list goes on and on. Why are we not just having their mental health evaluated first before affirming who they are, what they're saying, and whatnot? And why is it going on at such a young level, as well as all the way up the pike? These people are becoming the transgender community, we're told. We've also heard that a therapist told us today, I'm sorry, said today, that they would like to know more about how to support children who are very uncomfortable when asked what their pronouns are, or what their gender identity is in classes, because they're afraid to say that they're normal, they're straight, they're regular, or that their name is Joy, my birth name, my birth-given name. Or they don't even sometimes wanna say, "I'm uncomfortable answering that," or they don't wanna say, "None of your business." But that's what a lot of them want to say, but they're afraid to say it. So what about those children that we're supposed to keep safe and comfortable? They're afraid to do it because they are afraid to be laughed at, outcasted, bullied, and shunned. We're not protecting them, we're protecting the 1% or whatever it is. We're not making all of them feel included and safe. We also had a bunch of, sorry, a bunch of children tell us that they're afraid to go to the bathroom at school due to fear of transgender or the opposite sex showing up in the bathroom at the same time, or walking in on them, or them walking in on the opposite sex. They've had numerous parents, I've had numerous parents, and all of us have had these conversations about, a lot of times, our daughters are afraid to use the bathroom in the common home with urinary tract infections. They're getting sick because they're afraid to use a bathroom because somebody of the opposite sex might be in there. Why are we not protecting them and their rights? Make a bathroom for those who need to have a unisex bathroom, leave the other kids alone. Please, we're asking you, we're begging you guys to watch over all of the kids. They're getting sick, this is not okay. I'm gonna switch gears here. I'm sorry. Yeah, I wanna switch gears because I feel like, you know, I think you guys get it, right? I mean, everybody is concerned about it. We love all these kids, it doesn't matter who they love or what they are, we just want parents' rights, and we want all the kids to be okay. I just wanna mention the graduation, because I feel like we're putting our time into a bunch of other stuff that we shouldn't be putting our time into. At graduation, it was lovely, 2023, all the students, congratulations to all of you, y'all did a great job, congratulations to all the great staff and all the great teachers that actually love these kids and care about these kids, and you can tell, you could feel it when you watched them walk across the stage, give them a hug, and off they went with their diplomas. But for the sake of the kids, please fix this high school. This high school is falling apart, and we're putting money and time and effort into BP for 25 students to go to. I believe it still is, I could be wrong on that, somebody will correct me, I'm sure. But at the graduation, our lovely, I think it was valedictorian guy, it was a guy, I can't remember if he, what his name was, congratulations to him, what a super stud. And he mentioned, and we all laughed, I didn't laugh, I heard a big laugh, that at the high school, we have a big joke about going down the stairs and slipping because we have a big water problem coming down the stairs. And I do wanna mention that the, when we had that situation in November, when that girl was let into all of our schools, the students told her, "Be careful going down those stairs, it's slippery, we usually fall." Can we please take care of this school? Couple of last points. I'm sorry.
Ms. Malomo, please, final thoughts, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, does anybody have?
I'm gonna give five, three minutes to Joy.
No, we're not, we're not gonna do that tonight.
What do you mean? That's public.
That's our right to do that.
Each person will have three minutes.
So I'm speaking for a lot of people who are too afraid to get up here due to fear of retaliation. due to fear of retaliation. So I too am sort of fear of retaliation, but you know what? Somebody's got to say it. Because if not us, if not me, who's going to do it? You guys aren't doing it for us. We need you to understand, we need you to do this. So don't, I'm sorry, don't make it. We're going to find out later on, later on, that this caused a big problem for these kids, for transgenders or straights or whatever. We did that with the masks. We found out later on that the masks were causing health issues with people. They cause problems with speech delay, they cause problems with learning. We knew it, we were telling you, but we found out later for sure with the reports that came out. The lockdowns, those, we found out later that it caused severe issues in families and people and even deaths and suicides. The vaccination, we found out that it caused severe issues for some people and families and even death in some. So don't make this one, "Oh, we found out later and then it was too late." You know what I mean? And then last but not least, take the issues of helping the families, throw the situations and handle it accordingly because we don't want to get to the point where it's too late. Okay? And we don't want to put any more time and effort into places where we shouldn't be. So it's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malomo.
Hi, Anne Marie Sharick, Lakeville resident. One point I wanted to make was that I went to the subcommittee meeting last night. I do support a decision to just stick to the DESI guidelines for now and try to follow those as closely as possible. I also want to say to parents and kids in this community after kind of reading through social media and things like that, that there's love here, there is good here. Our kids are watching how we handle things that we may not understand and things that may be new to us. Let's show them that we can make decisions with understanding and compassion. Because when all is said and done and policies are decided upon, our kids are going to remember our actions and the paths that we took to get there. So let's keep our kids' wellbeing at the forefront of our decisions and of our dialogue. And to kids that might be watching, because I know there's high schoolers tuning in, this moment in time and these words that are being said and the people that fill this room are all just a drop in the vast ocean of life. No matter your feelings, your preferences, your name, your family, your friends, your teachers, there's love and understanding in this world. There is a place for you. You deserve to take up space in the world. I, yes. I hope you can forgive us adults as we muddle through policies and regulations. I hope that we can eventually get to a place that will make you all proud. I hope we can find compassion for those with differing beliefs and lifestyles. And I hope we can make all decisions that will affect you come from a place of love.
Thank you, Ms. Sharick.
Hello, Christina Barefoot from Lakeville. So just before anything gets timed, and I just want to say, you know, there was no time used at the last school committee meeting and many people spoke over three minutes. So I'm going to request to just be able to say what I need to say. Otherwise, I'm going to take it as discrimination. And I also wanted to say, I want to respectfully request that the groomer not address me as it interferes in my happiness and liberty. And you guys are elected to protect that. And I don't communicate with child predators. So I wanted to make that clear. Onto it. Yesterday's meeting was unproductive for a few reasons. You have an attorney who is not educated and was unprepared, of which we are paying for. Kelly clearly works on her private membership association called the bar and is using bar rules and has been misguiding you. She took an oath to the Constitution, but she is severely lacking regarding the Supreme Law. I'm requesting she either agree to be educated on the Constitution by an educator of our choice, the parents, or that you find someone who is educated on the constitutional law and use them instead, please. None of you all are educated in the Constitution or how this all works. We, the people, elect you to serve us. You in turn take an oath to that contract, the Constitution. Constitution is a contract. Contract law is the strongest law in this country. Any law that goes against the Constitution is repugnant to it. Your job in reality is to be the spokesperson for us when these unconstitutional bills come to the table at the state level. Yes, as a corporation, you can follow your corporate laws to administrate on financial levels, but we also oversee that in the Constitution. We're in charge of legality and making sure that all of that goes the way that we want with our taxes. But not when it comes to laws that other uneducated elected officials pass and that go against our Bill of Rights. When you make unconstitutional decisions, you lose your liability protection and you can be held accountable on a personal level. We also overrule any judicial decisions that go against our rights. We create a government to protect our rights, not to tread on them. This includes the judicial branch. The pending case that Kelly spoke about yesterday has zero to do with what needs to be done here to protect our offspring. Offspring are a biological property and is enshrined in the Constitution that family and upbringing of children is not the government's business. It's been in multiple court cases, it's in maxims of law. All of these things supersede any policies or anything that are unconstitutional legislators or maybe uneducated legislators put in place. It should protect those rights. If you're not willing to track or push back on unconstitutional bills put out by ignorant legislators and uphold the oaths you took to protect our rights, you need to step down. We're going to have to start holding you personally responsible for any breach of oath. This is not a joke, these are our children. It's time to pull up your big boy pants and start doing your job to protect our rights, the only reason government was created, or get out of the way and make room for those of us who are going to. Last, policy never supersedes constitutions. So if your policy is unconstitutional, it can be ignored and anyone who treads on our rights as parents will be held personally responsible. If you plan to move forward in creating a policy in line with the Constitution, then I'm asking it includes parents only on the committee. Only they understand what this is about. This whole transgender agenda is considered grooming from top to bottom. It's about money and grooming. And non-parents who also self-proclaim groomers do not belong on the committee. In fact, I'm instructing him to be removed and giving him a second verbal notice, instructing him to step down from the school committee altogether.
Ms. Barefoot, you're well over your three minutes. You're well over your three minutes. Thank you.
I asked you not to address me.
Thank you, Ms. Barefoot.
Do not address me.
Thank you, Ms. Barefoot.
Do not address me.
Thank you. We're going to have to get a timer.
Do I have to do the address too or just the name?
Just the name, please.
Okay. My name is Brenda Donahue. I grew up in Lakeville. I went to the school system. And I remember being in this library. To answer an earlier question, the sign at the door that says, "This is a safe space." When you're having a topic of education or you're discussing a topic that is contentious, everybody has a different viewpoint because everybody comes from a different path of life. And what it means when we say it's a safe space is that you're safe to ask any question that you might have that may have come from how your perspective was shaped and that you're not going to be treated as stupid or as someone who's coming at it with hate and aggression. You're going to have your question answered in the best way that someone can. And then the discussion continues from there. This library, I brought a book. The Babylonians, it's from the Folios Society. The title is Magic and Religion. It discusses the religion of a god named Ishtar. And Ishtar had two depictions, one was male, one was female, and the female named was Inanna. We find a Michigan of the Kurgaru and the Asunu, whose masculinity Ishtar had changed into femininity. The authoritative Chicago Assyrian dictionary comments that there is no evidence that they were eunuchs, males who'd had their genitals removed or homosexuals. It is inclined to believe that they were transvestites, but it's difficult to see what function transvestism could play in an ancient religion if it were entirely separated from homosexuality, which is the most obvious way in which a man has his masculinity changed to femininity. They were certainly thought of as being neither male nor female and they must have been a class of human being who seemed odd to the ordinary person and required some explanation for their existence since there is a myth in which they were created out of dirt from the fingernails of the god Enki. We know that such people also took part as actors and dancers wearing masks in various rituals. The god Enki created them to rescue Inanna who had been trapped in the underworld for three days, excuse me. And during those three days, no one would help her. In exchange for her being rescued by the sexless beings, her husband had to spend six months in the underworld and his sister took his place for six of those months. The six months that he was gone was winter. This myth was turned into Greek mythology where Persephone dozes under the world, I'll finish up in just a moment, and winter comes and, you know, spring has to come back. I understand that there's a lot of fear about being transgender and transsexualism and the grooming of children. But I would like to speak as candidly as we're able to because we are all adults in this room. The media that is being put out now is different than when you were children. Popular shows like Euphoria depict transgender children having sex with adults. Everybody's drinking and doing drugs. Kids are experiencing what you experienced in college and later, much earlier. And if you want to actually prepare them against groomers and adults preying on them, you need to explore it with them at this age. Because when you leave them to explore it with themselves, they find people who are preying on them, they find people who will drug them. You need to let them explore themselves. And if I had anything to add to this policy, excuse me. The students and the parents should be brought in together to the guidance. I'm not entirely on your side either. They should be brought in together. And the parents and the children can discuss it with someone who is coming at it from an objective perspective. The children can start exploring it at home with parents who aren't necessarily judging it and are attempting to expand themselves. Because what you're teaching your children when you don't respond to them in appropriate way is that you love them conditionally, that you don't love them unconditionally as God and Jesus commanded you to. If your child is transgender, they will be transgender for their life. And if you don't help them, if you don't guide them, if you don't understand that we are blessings, not curses, not inspired by demons, not monsters coming after your children, then they will have a bad life. Transsexual society had three castes. They had high priestesses. They had people who were simply recognized as women. And then they had prostitutes and the sex workers. And the sex workers and prostitutes were never recognized as female. But there was not a single person in my life who was surprised that I had transitioned. Not a single person. Because they knew. We exist, we have always existed and we will continue to exist. And I think a policy that allows children to explore with their parents, but not with their parents in control, complete control, is the safest way to go. Because if you allow these children to explore it entirely by themselves because the only thing they get from you is hate, vitriol and know you're wrong, then they're going to find worse ways to do it. And believe me, they will do it. So if you want to have control of this, if you want to be involved in this, then you need to approach this with the thought, what if they're right? Because if they're right and you treat it like it's never a possibility that they're right, you're going to lose them either way. Whether they cut you out of their life or they cut their own wrists.
That's what they're trying to do.
Thank you.
The parents in this situation didn't get a chance to speak with them. So thank you.
I have nothing but the utmost sympathy for you that you had to find out that way.
Yes.
But I will say one thing I have heard.
We love our son and that's all we have to say.
But that's the thing, what if it's not your son? What if your son is where? That's the point.
I think, thank you so much for speaking. We do, anyone else for other purposes. We do have some end of the year budget items that we do have to get into in the agenda here. I really do appreciate everyone coming up and hearing your voice, it is important. We have received several emails, if not, supporting parents' rights, supporting the opposite end of the spectrum and students' rights as well. We have a tremendous, tremendous work ahead of us. So moving on to Agenda Item Six, which will be Old Business, FY23. I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Farrah Welch.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In your packet you have the FY23 report as of June 26th. As you can see, revenues are on target. As I mentioned to you last month, the school-based revenue for Medicare is doubled. You see an extra $54,000 there for Medicare that can be appropriated based on how end of the year works out. To that end, your expense side of the budget reflects the encumbrances and end of the year balances. We're busily working in your business office as I've been reporting to you. We have been processing our end of the year payrolls, our teacher's summer payrolls as well, as well as getting our final bills in for our end of the year. We're working towards our final reports from our departments for their open purchase orders, as I reported to you last month as well. Our prior year encumbrances that we had been carrying that were related to supply chain issues. We have basically removed most of those and have been able to contact vendors, verify that they are supply chain issues and are able to reduce that fairly large report down to two pages. So we're very pleased about that as far as current year, year-end is concerned. I can go right into my director's report if you'd like.
I think that makes sense.
Thank you.
Go right ahead. Thank you.
In regards to year-end here, I've talked to you again about some of the things that I have mentioned as well as finalizing all of those contractual payrolls for our July 5th payroll. Our July 5th payroll is the last payroll for the fiscal year and will reflect mostly the hourly, the stipend payrolls, your appendixy payrolls and some of the other kinds of odds and ends that we will be processing for July 5th. As I've also been reporting to you that the FY24 budget that you have voted had a structural deficit due to a cross-footing issue from a Google Doc spreadsheet to an Excel spreadsheet. We discovered that in April. As I've been reporting to you, the district is managing that deficit by prepaying special education, summer tuitions for July, August and September, which we are legally allowed to do. We've started that process while at the same time we're reconciling FY24's move-ins and move-outs that we've been reporting to you. So we've got two lanes, if you will. We've got FY23 closeout that we're utilizing FY23 residual monies to prepay those tuitions. And then we're taking a look at our FY24 move-in and moves-out to see if there's residual tuitions there or we have a little more of a structural issue from that perspective. So that's the work that we're trying to do, closing out the year and then monitoring that deficit area for FY24. As we've discussed, that prepaying of tuition was an option for the district, for the school committee. As I've outlined here, you also had two or three other choices dependent. You could have appropriated that out of school choice. You could have appropriated out of circuit breaker funds were available. And you always had excess and deficiency dependent on how you end up with the reconciliation of out-of-district tuitions between the two fiscal years. There is no change in the town assessments. I got a call as I emailed to you from Ari Sky on Friday. We discussed this exact issue. I have also been discussing the issue with our auditor, Grady O'Connor. Grady has been kept up to date. We met with Grady early on. It's one of the first transition meetings that I have had in the district. And so I have been working with Grady on all of these odds and ends, I would refer to them. As you know, I came out of retirement. One of the things I really want to make sure is as I process June 30th, that I bring in the resources that we need to make sure that we process that and move forward appropriately from that perspective. FY24 is now open and supply material ordered for opening up September is ongoing and fast and furious, actually. Next, an update for you for the Assawamset Elementary School. Our last meeting was June 20th. The meeting yesterday was canceled due to a lack of quorum. At that meeting, we had Uh, at that meeting, uh, we had heard that the windows and doors, as I had been reported to you, if I can just revisit that report, if you will. So our windows and doors, a project, is on task and on target, but we were expecting a door delivery July 4th and July 11th. That was not the delivery date because of supply chain issues in glass. And so that new delivery date is August 4th and August 11th. So what we had to do was shift trades. We were expecting doors, do the doors, then do various asbestos and other kinds of site work. We've switched those. We are still on target. It's gonna be extremely extraordinarily very, very close. So here in my report too, I've outlined that our owner's project manager, our OPM on the project, he's a gentleman by the name of, of Joe, uh, from a company called Watermark. He is very, very good, one of the most seasoned OPMs I've ever worked with. He's reported that the August 4th, August 11th are current ship dates, not delivery dates. So we're adding a few days there to the ship date as opposed to the delivery date. That's four days, uh, which two are Saturday and Sunday, but I'm still in adding four days. We have our district custodial and maintenance team at the building. We are trying to proactively get in and clean, do whatever we can to that building, uh, from a preventative standpoint, get the construction project done, um, as close to the August 30th date that we're targeting, uh, and then get that team back into that building so that we can start to schedule Cisco food deliveries and things like that to open up our school. So that is the update as far as AES windows and doors. We're onsite this, there's a soft mobilization happening right now. You'll see some activity with some, uh, dropping and some construction vehicles happening. Uh, meetings will now start next week onsite. Your House Doctor Professional Designer Services, um, I have received sample standard contracts for the design, uh, professional design services. I've forwarded them to our attorney for review. Their boilerplate, if you will. So the review is making sure that our RFQ, if you will, ties into the boilerplate contract. Um, I talked to our attorney this afternoon. She has redlined that, has reviewed some things. She has sent that back to me. I have also spoken with Steve Habib, who was the first-ranked Habib and Associates, um, firm from the RFQ. And Steve and I are meeting the week of July 10th. So the way the fee proposals are identified, um, Steve will come in and, let's talk about master planning, your master planning fee proposal. So the architectural firm will come in and review all of your construction documents, all of what's referred to as ASBILts for any construction project that you had. Engineering reports, HVAC reports, plot plans, athletic field plan, your water sewer plant, your domestic water. They will look at all of those engineering reports and digitize those. They will look for Greg and I to meet with them to provide them various maintenance contracts, various bids that we've performed work on, our annual checklists. Uh, from that, they gather that information and they decide, they determine the validity, the solid foundation that they can build their master plan from. Do they have to, do we have ASBILts? The answer to that is yes. Do we have construction documents? The answer to that is yes. Do we have maintenance reports? The answer to that is yes. If the answer to that is no, and you have to start from your ground floor, your fee proposal is going to be higher. So Steve Habib is going to bring an engineer or two or a team to the district the week of July 10th. I don't have the exact date yet. Greg and I are going to meet in Greg's office, which is full of these construction documents that I am talking about. They will be able to then take those, digitize those, and be able to present to the school committee a fee proposal to start your master planning. So that is right around the corner from that perspective. At the same time, I talked to Steve Habib, uh, yesterday, uh, as well as this morning. When we were conducting our interviews, we were talking about grouping projects. We were talking about master planning. We wanna do our master planning. That's the whole emphasis, if you will, regarding the proposal for House Doctor Professional Design Services. However, we still have projects and needs while that master plan project, uh, process is ongoing. We have an issue with domestic water. We are losing domestic water. We are losing twice the domestic water on a daily basis than we should be using. There is tentative, it's only on a campus. We have investigated that. Multiple agencies have come, multiple, uh, professional agencies have looked for it. You've seen us digging some trenches when we hear infr- we hear sound, infrared, leak detection, you name it, we've done it. Steve Habib is coming in the week of July 10th. I am going to group this master plan proposal with a separate fee to investigate domestic water on behalf of the district. This has got to get under control, get under control fast. We're hoping we can identify it, identify the source, and come up with a game plan for September or as we move forward. So those are the two paths, if you will, that your House Doctor Professional Design Services, uh, can provide for you. Your longer-term master planning and right now that domestic water fee proposal, I'm looking for him as well. That hopefully will be here, uh, again, uh, the week of July 10th. I have that work being done. Also, the week of July 10th, I am going to, uh, visit, uh, Norwell, Massachusetts. I'm going to the auditor's office, uh, whose office is in Norwell, Massachusetts. Um, we have a lot of work to do with our audit firm in regards to some audits, um, that I need to catch myself up on. And his schedule is so very busy. I, he said, well, how about the last week of July? How about this? And I said, you know, Grady, how about if I come to you? So he said, well, if you'll come to me, that way I can see you the week of the 10th. So that's gonna be a very good, positive week as far as the project work that we're doing out of the business office. Here's my report.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Farrell Welch? Yep, Bob.
Just given your experience, how, how confident are you on that ship date?
Um, I underlined it.
I saw that.
I know you did. Um, again, you know, I was told it's only two days. You look at the calendar, there's a Saturday and Sunday. That's four days to me. And that's based on my experience why I added the two days. Um, we're talking contingency. We should be talking contingency thinking, planning, uh, what will September look like outside the building? We should be thinking that way. Um, the building will look a little differently in September as far as lighting is concerned, um, in non-educational areas. So the educational areas are going to be done according to schedule. Um, but there will be a different building in some areas as we open up for September.
Ms. Fox?
I was scared of that too. I was the last meeting. For the domestic water, they would have to use the same ASBILts and things like that to generate some kind of an accurate report of where the issue is because these, they were separate construction projects?
Yes, exactly.
Right. So this one was earlier, middle school, we did, I mean, they're all different.
So there are two things in regards to that. So we'll have ASBILts at a certain point in time.
Gotcha.
And then we'll have investigative reports that we've recently been trying to track down where this leak are. These are recent. These are within the last few months. So we'll take those first and then back into the ASBILts.
Okay. Good, sounds like a plan.
I, I would just emphasize, and I appreciate the grouping, but anything to expedite that because I have to assume the domestic water issue, if it continues to get worse, that could be an interruption in school.
Exactly. Yesterday, they had, they came, um, we did not have, uh, domestic water in the district. Uh, we were able to move things around, but then I pushed Steve a little harder to get here on the 10th for that reason.
Right. So any effort to expedite that would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're concerned before school. We're concerned summer and camps.
Oh, right.
Um, on district. So Lisa and I have had conversations about what our Plan B is gonna be.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? FY20 and personal work. All right. Um, so going down to agenda item number seven, new business. Given Ms. Barrow, uh, Ms. Baron's resignation, we do have to vote a new district clerk tonight. Um, so at this point, I will entertain a motion, um, for our district clerk.
If I nominate John.
Okay. I have a motion for John Burke to be our district clerk. I have a second.
Second.
Um, any further discussion at this point? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Mr. Burke, congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I just, a clarification, it's probably too late for this, but I know that position, if the election cycle...
It has to switch.
It has to switch. So are you up in the spring or...
25.
No, he's, yeah. So the question was surrounding, the district clerk cannot be up for reelection the same year that they serve. So, so Mr. Burke is up for reelection in 2025. That would make him able to serve as district clerk this year. Obviously, next year during that reorg, we'd wanna make sure that we, we kinda plan that accordingly.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Um, 7B is gonna be the FES solar project. I'd like to thank Ms. Petty for coming at our last meeting and, and just the due diligence that she's put into that project over there and, and trying to get some solar up on the roof over Freetown Elementary School. Um, there's obviously some hurdles that need to, um, be jumped prior to that becoming a, a reality, a lot of it pertaining to the, the roof over there and our ability or the town's ability to be able to get a grant, fund the roof, and then we can move forward there. I know Ms. Petty was on the, in the process of doing her due diligence, talking to the folks that they need to talk to. I know the document that she needs to sign was sent to Town Legal. All she is looking for from the committee at this time is a vote to support the project. Um, so at this time, I will entertain a motion, um, to support Freetown's, um, efforts to be able to put, um, solar up at Freetown Elementary School.
Let's all vote.
So hold on, I have a motion and second. Any, any further discussion?
I thought she was looking for a vote for investigating the entire process rather than, the first thing she has to do is get, find out whether or not we can receive the grant.
Correct.
Current roof at FES cannot hold cross panels. So if there's no grant, there's no project.
Correct.
She was clear on that.
Yep. So I think this vote is just supporting her work there.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Thank you. Um, so at this point, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Um, going down to agenda item number eight, um, subcommittee updates. Anything from regional finance at this point?
Yeah.
No? Um, superintendents evaluation, subcommittee, we're in the process of meeting now. Um, so more to come. And I know we are gonna be eliciting kind of a, a committee feedback, Bob. I know you were asking about that previously. Um, we have not forgotten about it. Um, Wellness and Health Committee, I don't believe we have anything there.
Had its last meeting, um, in the May, I believe.
Last meeting was the end of May. Okay, great. Um, Policy Subcommittee Meeting?
Well documented, we had a meeting last night. Obviously, it continued tonight with public participation. We are information gathering. We'll work with committee members to set up sort of a plan moving forward.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Um, and then final, uh, Capital Committee, and I think we, we received the update from Ms. Farrell Welch tonight. So that's great. Um, going down to agenda item number nine, other business that may properly come before the meeting, and, and I wanna shift to you, Alan, because I didn't see a superintendent's report yet.
Right, it's kinda...
It's not, it's not huge. It's just, we figured we'd end it at, at number nine.
Okay.
So a couple of things. Officially, uh, we received word that we did not receive the Safer Schools grant. Um, it finally came out. Um, as I said, there was, um, $3 million available in the Commonwealth and almost $24 million in requests. Um, I have no idea who received that money, but I do want the community to keep in mind that at, at our last meeting, we did approve and have put through POs for, for the vestibules here on campus. Um, AES will already have vestibule taken care of through the new project. FES already has theirs. Plus, we have, um, from the work that we did together with Senator Roderick, the $75,000 that we will be able to use. Greg Goodwin has been away. When he comes back next week, that is going to be one of our priorities as to what we begin to look at, whether it is buzzer systems, whether it is systems for when doors are open. Um, we, we need to get a lot of pricing, but we do have $75,000 that we do not have to rush. Um, we don't have a particular timeline, so, um, I just wanna update everybody on Two meetings ago, Terry Fleming had talked a little bit about student outcomes and, and concerns. And the school committee brought up the concerns about, um, student success and, and the fact that we had students who were behind. As part of our work at the beginning of the year with our, um, school improvement plans, we focused specifically, as did, um, part of my goals, um, for this year on reading, if you remember. Um, we talked about reading, we talked about writing, we talked about math, some, some real concerns. Our teachers have done a remarkable job. The principals really honed in. I just wanted to give you some early data points because I think it's really important. I-ready scores at FES, that's what we're gonna start with, reading. In November, 32% of our students throughout FES were on grade level. That's a concern, and we talked about that two meetings ago. The latest I-ready data shows that in June, 91% of our students were on grade level. Now, again, I-ready is one data point.
Right.
It is not the tell-all, but it is a, certainly a positive trend. Grade one, we went from 18% to 71% on grade level. Grade two, 34% to 80%. And grade three, 49% to 77%. So all grades showed significant improvement in reading. At AES and Numeracy, and again, there's lots of data, but I'm not gonna spend all our time on that. Numeracy, Nov- at AES, November, it was 17% of the school was on grade level, which is concerning. In June, it was 71% when we got data back. And, um, in math specifically, overall, 26% were on grade level, um, with algebraic equations and 74% in June. So the teachers have done a remarkable job, which we know, um, that they continue to do. So I, I just wanna update you on that. The final thing that I wanted to update everyone, um, we had had, uh, the school committee was kind enough last year when we had some number issues in third grade at both FES and AES to add an additional teacher in, in both classrooms, in both schools, if you This year's incoming third grade is, is much, much smaller. So rather than lose teachers and tell teachers, we don't need you, um, and have class sizes that are just remarkably too small, um, we made a decision, um, and, and we've had a number of conversations, that one of the areas where we need some support in is with the new state mandated dyslexia screener, is how do we support our youngest readers who are struggling, um, both with dyslexia and non-dyslexia? So what we have done is we have taken one of those third grade positions. And we have, we are in the process of finalizing a contract with a teacher who is Orton Gillenham certified rather than trained. So she is specifically trained to work and pull out students or pull in students, depending on how we work it. She will split between both buildings. That is a monumental win for us. And we are very excited. The year after, when we're gonna need the third grade teacher back, the position, we have already funded this for Title I. So we, this is not a one-year position. So it has been a long time coming. There have been, um, I appreciate all the parents at CPAC and, and who have come out and, and really talked about, we need to do something for our struggling readers, um, and, and this is a real positive.
That's great. That's great. Yep, moving in the right direction, let's keep it rolling, um, for sure. Um, anything for, um, the superintendent? Okay, at this point, um, we've exhausted the agenda here. Oh, sorry, Bob.
Uh, I think most people know, but, uh, this is the last week. Uh, Police Chief from Freetown is, is going to be the chief. And, uh, he's worked closely with the district over the years. I'd like to, uh, send him a congratulatory note and, uh, wish him a, a good retirement.
And welcome our new chief, Scott Rose.
Welcome our new chief, yep.
Absolutely, thank you for that, Bob, for sure. Ms. Barron, yes? Thank you for reminding me, Ms. Barron, yes, ma'am, we do. Um, so I will entertain a motion, um, to accept Ms. Barron's resignation at this point. Um, that is a final kind of hurdle that we need for, um, the Board of Selectmen and obviously the Lakeville members of the committee as well to, to kind of finalize a replacement for her, so.
I made that motion.
All right, Jean has made that motion. Second, from John Burke. Um, all those favorites, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Abstained.
Abstained.
Lots of abstaining. Um, last is, uh, motion to adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this point.
It's all moved.
Jean?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.